I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Ward, would you lead us, please?
Lord, thank you for your grace and mercy. Please overlook our country during these times of mistrust and confusion. Please guide us to always follow your needs and direction. God bless us all and thank you for loving us all. Bless everyone within this country as well as within this town. Amen.
Good morning, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started with public comments. Do we have any public comments this morning?
Seeing none, we will move into our retirement presentation. Is Richard Asbury here this morning? We want to congratulate him on his retirement. He's in the facilities department and he's been here five years and five months. With that being said, we'll move right into our public hearing, O twenty-four, one forty-one, ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise for Valor Telecommunications of Texas LLC, Windstream Communications Southeast, a New Mexico corporation and public utility by Eddie County, New Mexico.
I will look for a motion to open the public hearing for O dash twenty-four dash one forty-one. Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. This is another finally getting here franchise agreement. Before you guys for Windstream, looking back on things, we had apparently an occupied, never had a franchise agreement with Windstream. Gotta hold up and move this thing forward with them. There were a couple of small changes that they requested. Cass, I review those. Along with their legal counsel, came to agreement on everything and we're just here with you. Move us forward if you all agree.
We have any public comments? Cass?
Steve and I worked with, they did want a couple of changes. They were not anything of consequence. So they're pretty much dovetail the other ten or eleven we have.
Commissioners?
How long is this contract for?
Ten years.
Ten years, okay.
Is there, do they have any clauses within that franchise agreement about the quality of service?
I don't believe there is.
No.
You know, maybe we want something to look at.
Any others? Then I'll look for a motion to approve. What are we looking for? Ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise for Valor Telecom of Texas.
Second.
A motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
I'm gonna need a motion to adjourn public hearing O dash twenty-four dash one forty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Two motions in a second.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next we'll move into IFB twenty-four oh four, new Colt M five brown rifles for the Eddie County Sheriff's Office. Ms. Tanya?
Good morning.
Morning.
So for IFB twenty-four oh four, the county received a roll of the biz, five which were determined meeting all the specifications. Their force staff is recommending the award to be made to play harmony. If there's any questions.
Questions? Look for a motion to approve IFB twenty-four dash oh four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we'll move into our trailing agenda. First item we have is commission meeting minutes for September third, twenty twenty-four.
Any items that we need to pull? Things for further discussion? For a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for September third, twenty twenty-four as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Commission meeting minutes for September fourth, twenty twenty-four, our special meeting?
This was a quick one. Anything that we need to look out for? Look for a motion to approve commission meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Epstein?
Commission meeting minutes for September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Move to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Epstein.
And Cordova?
Yes.
And finally, we have our purchase card approval report for August twenty twenty-four.
Any questions on any of the items that were presented to us? For a motion to approve purchase card approval report for August twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next on our agenda, we will have a presentation by My Power of Danielle Hernandez, who's the executive director, and some of her staff is gonna come up to give us her presentation. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Dr. Eliza Sinporta, and I am My Power's business consultant and former executive director of eleven years. And this is, of course, Danielle Hernandez, our current executive director of My Power Incorporated. Thank you so much for considering us for this grant request of a thousand or more, should you feel compelled to do so. I know that we're pressed for time, so we're going to dive right in. My Power began in twenty-ten with just twenty-four goals. To date, we have grown to become the largest redevelopment program in Lee County. We have impacted thirteen thousand one hundred and two girls since My Power's inception. We've worked with one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven girls and now boys in just as completed this one year in thirteen different schools. So this is who we are and what we do. We are a nonprofit organization that was founded to empower our youth to successfully navigate their teen years by helping them make good choices, succeed academically, set goals, and avoid teen pregnancies. We do this meaningful work because the pressures, they start in middle school. And they start with teen pregnancy and STDs, academic failures, drug and alcohol abuse, and then exposure to negative peer pressure. Nod your head if you're concerned about what our teens are facing. We all are. And a great way of navigating this is by having the hard conversations, just like we are today. So our economy, the workforce, and their home and student life learning environments, they have all changed, which makes our youth even more susceptible to early and risky behavior. So My Power offers three programs at no cost to our youth in Lee County, and now our expansion into Carlsbad. So the one we're gonna focus on is not all three, but the one we're gonna be expanding to in Carlsbad, which is our mentoring circles program. This is a three-month program that is offered from January all the way to April, all throughout Lee County, and now our expansion into Carlsbad. This is a twelve-week curriculum that teaches them how to face their fears, how to have courage, how to set goals, how to break bad cycles in their life, how to be a good friend, and then what to expect in middle school. During weeks seven and eight, we will have doctors and nurses that will come in and provide a sex education talk to them. They will teach them how to use a pad. They'll teach them how to, about the changes that are happening both in their brains and their bodies. And we are a full disclosure program that teaches abstinence plus information. So that means, of course, we want our children to wait until they're out of high school and a committed relationship with someone they love. But if they choose something different for their life, we want them to be fully educated on all the resources that are available to them in case to help guard them against STDs and teen pregnancies. Now, prior to these two lessons, we do send out pamphlets and letters to parents to help them to the students' home address. This encourages parents to open up the conversation, to answer or even talk about these tough conversations with them first, if they want to. If not, we can do all the talking and they can be fully educated to answer any questions. We offer two free field trips. The first one is to the University of the Southwest. And then the second one is to your nicest restaurant right here in Carlsbad. The reason why we do that is because we want the girls to dream big and dream about their future, and we do it just because they're worth it. At the end of twelve weeks, we have a big graduation. This is just to celebrate how far and how much they have grown and learned. Everything we do at My Power is on purpose. From the way our curriculum engages the students with visual, auditory, and kinesthetic learning to the crafts and field trips. And at the end of twelve weeks, I guarantee you, parents will see a change in their daughters and they will be proud. I believe that My Power's program can be summed up in two words, and that is good news. Teen birth rates are down by eighty-four percent in the fifteen to seventeen-year-old category since My Power's inception. And I believe that our lower teen birth rates have been a community effort. It takes our schools, our churches, our political leaders. It takes you. It takes all of us to address this issue. So today, we're asking you to change the lives of our youth by investing into the pilot mentoring circles program right here in Carlsbad. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us today. We cannot wait to do this meaningful work with you. Now, I'd like to open up the floor for any tough questions that you have. Feel free to ask Danielle Hernandez.
Guys, first off, thank for the presentation was excellent. Got together very well. We have any questions, guys?
Glad to hear you mentioned churches. I'll let it go with that.
And now, as I understand, you're gonna, this is piloting into commonly elementary?
Yes, ma'am.
And then what's your plan after that? I mean, would this be available at all of our elementary schools or moving into our middle schools?
So the way we've been able to maintain quality and make sure that what we're doing is actually impacting our youth is by making sure our staff is fully trained. So in order to do that, it would have to grow at small increments at a time. So being in every elementary after this year isn't gonna be feasible. But being able to grow maybe into a second elementary school and get people that are good, quality, and trained from Carlsbad is a possibility. And when we grow incrementally in Lee County, it's one school, it's not a super school. So starting off with a super school is a really big deal. But quality and making sure that all of our team can teach the program with fidelity is a top priority for us. Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson, anything to add?
No. I think it's a great program.
My other question would be, why would we not do this?
That is a great question. I am with you on that.
This is something that I think our community needs and something I'm happy to get behind. So I'll look for a motion to
So moved.
Approve the twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
A motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
So we're beyond grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great day.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our treasures report for August twenty twenty-four. This is FY only, so unless you guys have any questions or some motion needed. Next is our revenue report for August twenty twenty-four. So for August twenty twenty-four, this was for May's business activity. For grocery receipts tax, the county collected a little over five point six million dol- six million dollars. It was pretty much right on par with what we collected last fiscal year. For our oil and gas, we collected seven point one million dollars total for production equipment and royalties. This is about a nine percent increase over last year, same time last year. We're averaging about twenty-four million barrels per month, and we've been around the seventy-dollar mark averaging. I believe the price of oil this morning was hovering right around seventy dollars. For gas, we've been averaging these last couple of months, for July and August, about a hundred and eighteen million units. And price for the gas has been about two point two eight. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Question here. Look for a motion to approve the revenue report, August twenty twenty-four as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is our budget versus actual August revenue and expenses. Countywide, like I explained, we have quite a bit of transfers this fiscal year mainly due to the detention center and administration building. So with, with not taking transfers into consideration for revenue, we've collected a little, about seventy percent, and our expenses were more at about twenty-four percent. General funds, we're right at about twenty-seven percent without transfers for revenue and for expenses. We're about twelve percent expensed for general fund. I'll stand for any questions.
Nope.
Look for a motion to approve the budget versus actuals August revenue and expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a budget adjustment for tractor transfer trucks for Sandpoint landfill. Mr. Burns?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, what we're asking for you this morning is we're budgeting to buy two transfer trucks at the landfill. What we're currently experiencing is the haulers that we have now are more road trucks, more meant for the roads. Our crews had a pretty out-of-the-box idea, and what we found was refurbished military trucks. They're six-wheel drive, and they'll pull those line-bottom haulers that we have around there and get them in and out the face and up and down and around. So I think this is definitely, we're buying two of them with this budget adjustment. With the money that we're spending on maintenance and repairs, it's very much worth the investment to do these, to have the six-wheel drive, to be able to get them up and down. I mean, we do the best we can with the roads and the conditions out there, but it gets pretty difficult to pull those hards, those heavy trailers up and down and get them around. So with as much as we're doing it with the operation of the tipping station, I think this will be a good alternative to using the road-type tractor trucks.
What's that price that was on their outfit and everything, ready to go?
Hook them up and start using them. They include, and that's the whole deal, is we were real worried about what we were gonna have to do to outfit them. These have been refurbished and include the wet kids, so if we back them in and hook them up, we're gonna start using them.
Perfect. Cool. Questions? Look for a motion to approve the budget adjustment for tractor transfer trucks for Sandpoint.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into reclassifying existing transfer station tech to light equipment roll-off operator.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, what we're asking this morning is, we've had a transfer tech that's currently been assigned to Loving. That employee has moved on to another opportunity. What we're requesting is we reclassify his position from a transfer tech to a roll-off driver if we can utilize him in other locations. We can send him around and assign him to go pick up cans. The transfer tech was not a C D L, could not drive on the road with any of our haul-off trucks. So we're wanting to reassign this to a roll-off driver so that we can utilize him and fit him into our schedule to haul cans.
Any questions? Look for a motion to approve the reclassification of existing transfer station tech to light equipment roll-off operator.
So moved.
Second. Paul.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, next we have our resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Anything that anybody wanted to pull? Further discussion? Look for a motion to approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented? So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Item number nine, travel request consent agenda.
Questions?
None.
Look for a motion to approve the travel request consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. We don't have any emergency business this morning. I don't have any legislative comments, announcements, or updates. We'll move into elected official department comments, announcements, and updates.
Look what you did. Try to broke it. Geez, Charlie. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, so the biggest thing that I want to bring up is the new radio system went live last week. We did have some hiccups, but we've been able to get them worked out. The people stayed, they weren't late. We had some issues with Tony, so we were able to get that fixed.
Still have issues with Tony.
I know, yeah. So I want to thank Rita. That staff really stepped up and they helped us a ton, the dispatchers with all the activity on the floor, changing out consoles, trying to dispatch, taking that one call, it was just seamless. It was a really good operation. The sheriff's office had some radio issues with some serial numbers and things like that, so we had to go back through and completely rebuild the list. It was, like I said, it was kind of one of those things that when it all hit, it hit, when everybody jumped in, they did their part. These guys jumped in with their radio people to help with the sheriff's office, to help Chris and Jared, and we got it knocked out. New Mexico do it, Department of Information Technology, which were joining their system. They were really good partners. We had to have some last-minute meetings, and they jumped right on, and they went in, and they gave the details and things were ironed out. So Motorola, they stepped up and they had adequate people here. They made the arrangements. We had to extend some days, so they were able to do that. And then, of course, my staff, so. Since we've gone live, obviously, the conversation starts. Wow, that works. It does this, it does that. We need to do this, we should do that. So now everybody else is in the area, is kind of trying to talk about jumping on the system, which will help us. So going good. Channel, the old channels are patched in still, so those will be for six to eight months, potentially a year. We gotta kind of wait and see what Carlsbad does, because that is how we communicate with Carlsbad Dispatch, so. But if any issues happen, we will be sure to let you know. But like I said, we've been going for about a week now. So, and we haven't had issues for about the last four or five days, so knock on wood. We've still got a little bit of work to do, so we'll get that knocked out. Staffing-wise, we were down ten. H R has helped us tremendously, so we've got five that started their academy Monday, two pending physicals. And then we have a lateral that's pending background in physicals, and that lateral is actually in paramedic school currently, so that's gonna be a nice addition. So we're back at A, so we're just gonna be short two, so that'll help us a lot. So as long as everything holds, we'll be doing, we'll be in a good spot. Our standard to cover, kind of go back on some projects that we had approved. That one has completed phase one, which was a lot of statistical data that we had together, put it in their system. So now we're moving on to the G I S segment of it, so when that report's done, I think it's gonna be really helpful to help the community and y'all see the multiple things and facets that happen and what we're looking at, how we gauge the service that we provide, and how we've made changes to affect change and be more positive. So it kind of takes a look into prior to consolidation, and then it includes a little bit of consolidated data as well, so. The state fire grants will be scored this week, the seventh through the ninth, or I guess next week, the seventh through the ninth. There's seventy-four million dollars in requests, which I was really proud of. That means everybody's stepping up and putting in for it. Unfortunately, there's only thirty-three million dollars available, so there's gonna be some people that just don't get awarded, so. Our fire and life safety position, I was at it this year. He's been to N F A, which is National Fire Academy in Edmondsburg, and taking a lot of classes, and he's been hitting the ground running. So he had sent out an email, so I thought I'd give you all a little insight of what he's doing. There's a career fair Wednesday at our T J High School that we'll be attending. He gets the crews to go out and help him do that. On the twelfth, we're gonna assist with the Side Palmer Memorial Car Seat Clinic. It'll be a chance for our people to see kind of what that would take to get trained in that. He's looking at, bless you. And what they actually asked us to do was bring a fire truck so we can take the kids while the parents can stay there and see how the car seats actually installed. So I thought that was a pretty neat little way that we could assist with that program. And then, of course, fire prevention. We've got Loving Elementary, Loving Middle School. They're gonna do a lunch with the kids. We've got Paradise Ranch School, and then we're doing a little church school that's right over here in town, so. And then, of course, smoke detectors and fire extinguisher installs have been through the roof. We just had to get a P O for like thirteen thousand dollars to get some more stuff ordered, and I think we've done probably a hundred, over a hundred smoke detectors in the last two weeks, so.
Is that a lot?
That's a lot, yeah. It's pretty, it's quite a few, because we try to get outside of every bedroom, plus the fire extinguisher, so. We had one person, they posted on Facebook and it got shared, and right away we had fifty more, and then, or I say fifty, that's kind of exaggerating. But twenty, probably twenty requests immediately within that day, and then we went and did some more, and so they're staying busy with that, so. Everything's going good. Calls have been handled well. We've had some pretty significant calls. We're starting to see an uptick in car wrecks again. So we just want to remind everybody to be safe. I mean, if you just drive through town around, you can see the ways some people drive, so. Just be safe. Take your time. Get where you need to get. But they are starting to pick up, and they're starting to get pretty significant, which makes me nervous with the two-eight-five getting ready to go and back up, so. We definitely need to work on getting that message out, just operate safely, so. Any questions, comments?
I, do you, are any of the new hires from the job there that we just hosted, do you know?
I would have to check with H R to be for sure on that one. Some of them are in the pool, but we do have, so we still have some pending that need to come and test that I think are from that pool, so. It's just a matter of schedules aligning with the available days. But I will verify. I will get you that information box down here. Anything else? Thank you. Thank y'all. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Couple things this morning. So we're it's come back around. We've got all of our information and our studies just about complete and ready as presented. We've received all of our information. This is regarding our judicial facility and our courthouse project. So what the intent is, we've coordinated with Intermanager McCutcheon right before he left, and we're working on our presentation. The intent is that we're gonna have a presentation only at the next commission meeting. That we're gonna present everything we've done, all of our findings, all of the studies. So this will essentially provide you the information that we've received from our architects and our professionals and everyone that we've been going through, all of our conceptuals, our designs, our processments, our timelines, everything that we've put together for this thing. From there, we will schedule our town halls, and we'll go through that and present this to the public. Um, and then we'll coordinate with Chairman and Mr. McCutcheon as to how we proceed from there. Um, it's, it's a lot of information. We've got some really good options. We've got a good plan. We hope we have the, we've accomplished everything that answered all the questions and concerns that were brought up during the last rendition of rolling this thing out. Um, the with this information, then you can decide and make your decision and go from there. Um, so, we're, it's ready and we're bringing it out. So it's gonna be good. We've got a good plan. Um, and we've got a lot of really good information. And that'll be, like I said, a presentation only. We're not expecting a vote on the fifteenth. It'll be just a presentation to have the information, and then we'll schedule the town halls and, uh, take direction from there. The other thing on the fifteenth, we'd like to do is, we'd like to do a groundbreaking of the complex. We're gonna have machinery out there. We're gonna start clearing and grubbing everything. The detention center design is moving along really efficiently. We had a meeting yesterday regarding care and new construction. Um, so with that, uh, our civil, um, portion of the design is, uh, getting to a point that we can kinda start grading this, the site. So we're gonna move some of our county equipment out there and do the clearing and grubbing and start doing some rough grading for the projects that are forthcoming here soon. So we'd like to go ahead and do an official groundbreaking, the ceremonial deal, because this is a big deal. It's a big deal for Eddy County. So it needs to be treated like that. So we'll try to do a groundbreaking. We'll do that right after the commission meeting on the fifteenth, if that works in everyone's schedule. So. Gold shovels, hard hats, and the whole deal, so.
Do you have an idea what time do you do it?
Uh, depending on the agenda and more likely, probably about ten-thirty, be about-
Oh, yeah, that's meeting day, but-
Yeah, I mean, right after the meeting. We'll, we'll go right out there after that. We'll do the quorum, the whole deal. We'll go out there and do a quick groundbreaking, so. Before and after. So. I think that's all I got. It's, it's gonna be good, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna let everybody know that we're gonna vote next Tuesday, so that's really exciting. Um, tomorrow, we're gonna certify the absentee and early voting machines. That's open to the public at nine AM over here at the early voting warehouse. Um, I also want to thank all the departments that helped with the election. We need a lot of help from the road department. They help us deliver the tabulator to the polling sites and everything. Jason lets us use the conference room at Artesia to conduct our election worker trainings. So we appreciate that very much. Horse Finance helps pay our workers and everything. Fire Services helps as far as if we need generators in their facility as a polling site on election day. And, uh, I'm sure I forgot some people, but anyway, if anybody has any voting questions, send them to our office.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Uh, I'll be fairly brief here. Uh, I've got that in vacation, which is kinda cold. Got to go catch some fish. Um, so if you're following on Facebook, you get to see all the cool stuff that I'm cooking.
Corpus Christi and you?
Yeah, always. Oh, yeah, yeah. Rockport, Port Ransay area. Um, anyway, we're seeing some weird stuff, and I mean, it's, it's a trend in law enforcement now, apparently. Uh, a lot of movement, which we don't normally see at the Eddy County Sheriff's Office. We're not in crisis mode by any means, but we're down a few. I think we're down about eight or nine right now, which is weird. And, um, I've talked to Chief Skinner and, and he's, he's struggling, uh, at the city. They're, they're trying to get people hired. And they're, they're, they're leaving for a myriad of reasons, and it's just weird. The only one that's not struggling, and here I've been promoting him, is, is Chief Byrd out of Loving. He's hired all kinds of people, but he's on, he has a very small force. He's actually stolen a couple from me, so I had to talk words with him. But, uh, a- and that's fine. I wish them well. Uh, I really do. The thing is, we're, we're, we're seeing a lot of, we're having, we have applications coming in. We have certified applications. We went to a, uh, had a presentation at the university, at the university, at our college here, uh, from, no, it wasn't at the college. It was, I can't remember where it was. Oh, it was, uh, NMC, my bad. And it was, uh, 'cause y'all don't think they would've come to Southeast Mexico College. And the, in, uh, uh, New Mexico State University said, if y'all wanna come down and recruit, we, we let anyone come down here, we'll set you up, we'll get you going. They had a job fair and I said, I, I decided that I, I didn't wanna do the job fair part there at MSU because I didn't wanna be lumped in with everybody else. So we sent our recruiters down there. We got forty-one applications. Now, how many of those are gonna pan out? I don't know. But that was quite the haul. I was, I was shocked by that. Forty-one. And it may not be applications for forty-one interested folks that, that, that had put in letters of interest or something of that nature, or taken steps in that direction. So that's encouraging that young folks are starting to look at law enforcement as something positive again. Um, and I hope it's a trend that, that will continue. So, we're working on it. Um, my staff and I have been working on, uh, some ideas, uh, to, to make things even more palatable, uh, to become, to come and be a deputy at, at Eddy County. I mean, we're always in competition there. We're in competition with all that. We're always in competition with the state police, and we will never, ever be able to compete monetarily with the state police. It's just, the, the pay is too high. But we can come close, and we, we have some creative ideas about what to do, so. The, the, the goal is, we're looking forward not to get to that crisis mode. We've been there before. We've been there when we were down so many that we were scrambling. So, we're being proactive and have some ideas. We'll be bringing them forward and saying, hey, here's something we would like to do. Uh, what do y'all think about it as a subject? So, that being said, we're picking up some vehicles today, uh, in Albuquerque. We're gonna have some new vehicles on the road. Uh, that's, we're always grateful, uh, for the, the support that y'all give, making sure that we have the proper equipment for our deputies. Um, we're truly blessed, uh, here in Eddy County, and, and the, the sheriff's office definitely benefits from that, just like everybody else, and that means the public benefits. And y'all's commitment, y'all, y'all talk the talk, but you walk the walk, and I think that's very important for the public to understand, is, a lot of people say, yeah, we support public service. We're all about it, 'cause that's the cool thing to say, right? That's the politically correct thing to say. But y'all have taken it to another level because anytime we need something, that is reasonable, and we try to be reasonable. You make sure we have it. And working with, with, with Roberta, working with Al before, um, working with, with Steve now while he's here, and then this commission, this city commission, has been a pleasure, and, um, I don't think y'all give enough credit for that, any. So, I just wanna give you that credit today and say thank you for this. It makes my job a pleasure, and it makes it really nice to be able to go to my deputies and say, what do y'all need? You tell me what y'all need. If I think it's right, I'll propose it, and we'll see what we get, and we usually give what we need. So, again, I'm gonna end it on a positive note today and just say thank you to all of your, all of your support. And Cass kicked me in the bounds every once in a while, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'm sorry, any questions? Does anybody have anything for me?
Surely you're going in political correctness in my direction.
No, sir. I would never, never insult you that way.
Any others? No? Mr. Chairman, there's no county manager comment, so turn it over to Commissioner Collins.
Uh, again, I appreciate what the sheriffs have just said. I mean, I, I can see some trends going on around the country. Not a whole lot specific, but I think that the, the populace is starting to wake up a little bit to some of the egregious things going on countrywide, and along the lines of fixing some of that. I am very impressed with the presentation. It's a number out here. My, uh-
My power?
My power. I think that would be number four. That's a good deal. It's showing results across the board. You know, I support it, we support it. I mean, there's some good things happening around this country in spite of all the negative stuff, but, uh, and that's all I have to say. Once again, I'd like to say thank you to all the employees of Eddy County. I think this county runs, as one of our previous chairmen would say, top shelf. Uh, we do this, you guys are good. It shows.
Commissioner Carlson? Uh, I agree with everything Fred said. Uh, I think we've got great employees at the county. I think we, our emergency services and our sheriff's department, our sheriff, are top-notch. We've got one of the premier, uh, agencies in the state of New Mexico, and we wanna keep it that way because the better equipped, better trained, and most knowledgeable, uh, that, that our law enforcement is and our, our safety people are, the better result it is for the public and us over after. So I think they do a great job in doing that. Um, today, I would kinda like to recognize, uh, some of the things that are happening and individuals within our community that have really outperformed themselves. Uh, one of them is Kevin Zink and his culinary class up at the high school. Uh, I don't know if y'all know it, but they, they competed in the, uh, cooking, uh, competition at the state fair and they won it. So, a big hand goes out to those guys, so they did great, and it's great to see the youth that can accomplish something like that and move on, uh, to bigger and better things. Also, in my district, we have a nine-year-old girl. Uh, and all the youth are great, but this is extraordinary. We have a, a nine-year-old girl, Addie Parsons, that, uh, has been competing in the barrel racing in, uh, some open competition, which means that we have a nine-year-old competing against adults. And, uh, would like to highlight the fact that, that she won a big high stakes barrel race in Hobbs on the eighteenth, and then this past weekend, she ran fifth against thirty adult, uh, competitions in an open, uh, rodeo that we have here in Carlsbad. How special is that for a nine-year-old? And, uh, then I also, uh, self-interest, would like to recognize my daughter who, uh, a couple of weeks ago qualified for the American, uh, regional qualifier that'll be held in January, uh, in Las Vegas, Nevada, uh, January the ninth through the eleventh, so I'm very proud of her. And, uh, then she also was a money winner out at the open rodeo, so a big shout-out to both of those, uh, competitors from Eddy County. And I would like to say both of them are riding horses out of our breeding program, so, uh, that's kinda a special deal for you. Thank you very much.
Well, I love to hear about people doing good things in our community too, and, and, um, it's important. Sheriff, thank you for your words as well, and it is important to me that staff and, you know, all of our staff throughout the county, if they mean something, I would hope that they would, you know, come forward and let us know what they mean. I think speaking for all of us, we want to support all of you employees, give you what you need to do your job effectively and safely, so thank you for that. Um, as far as other comments, it seems like everything is moving right along, uh, with the county. I'm grateful for that, and, um, that's really all I have, so thank you.
I'll keep it short and simple. Everybody's kinda highlighted all the good points, thanking everybody and, uh, county employees. I just wanna encourage everybody to get out and vote, starting next Tuesday. Um, very important election on many different levels, and it's your duty to get out and cast your vote. Regardless of who you're voting for, you need to get out and cast your vote and do what is necessary. Um, with that, that's all I got. Everybody have a good day.
Thank you.